You've got seven. I was looking at watching the longest minute.
Longest minute, yeah.
Call meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone this evening to our meeting. Thank you to our guests that are here. Thank you to the police force here. We'll go ahead and get started. On the second item, approve the agenda for tonight. Motion by John, second by Blake. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to approving the consent calendar, which is the minutes from our last meeting and the payment of bills. Motion by Mary. Second by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carry. Move on to item number four, consider the approvals for railroad days.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I'm Jordan Goodwater. I am the event committee chair for Staples Chamber. And myself along with my co-conspirator Renee Crowell will be coordinating Railroad Days again this year. I have provided information, kind of a tentative calendar of kind of what's going on as well as some approvals that we are requesting and some assistance we need. And I won't go through everything, but just kind of some high level things. We have a week full of celebration for the City of Staples. Starting on August 14th, so we're going to run Monday through Sunday. There will be events every day along that with the major celebration happening on Saturday. Some highlights this year, 10 o'clock parade, of course. We're going to be bringing back free bounce houses for the kids downtown to hopefully keep them for a while. We have trampolines, pizza eating contests, because who can't eat a large tower pizza in five minutes without getting sick? For adults, we have games, expanded beer garden, some axe throwing, a great vendor show lineup. And Canon Old West Society will be back for the second time to provide two shows rest downtown for the Wild West Show. And then of course, we'll finish off the evening with Thirty Two Below, which is a country western band at Beck's Burgers. You cannot skip church on Sunday morning, so worship in the park will happen again at MP Park at 10 o'clock in the morning. Then we're excited to launch a football tournament that same day out at Holst Acres, and that will benefit the Staples Motley Athletic Hall of Fame. We could not do this without the support of the community. We had forty-three organizations and businesses step forward to sponsor Railroad Days, which has put us in one of the best positions we've been in, to not be a burden on either the Chamber or the city. Along with that, we could not do it without the support of the city and the staff. Everyone has kind of come out of the woodwork to help us with different things. We met with Missy Public Safety on Monday to go over some of the concerns that we wanted to work through to make sure it was going to be easy for them and to be the safest event we could have. And then Lacey from Parks and Rec, kind of stepping forward a lot to provide a lot of assistance to us and some ideas to help make that event even better. Last year, we sent out six thousand flyers to the surrounding communities. This year, we're bumping up to nine thousand, so we're going to add a whole other community. If you weren't able to be there as soon as the parade was done downtown and see that mob of people come to the center of Staples, I encourage you to do that because it's something else. I will be open to questions if anyone has any questions. Otherwise, everything's kind of outlined here. The schedule is still in progress, so there may be some changes to that. So, and that will be put in Staples World as soon as that is finished, to get that information out there. Anyone have any questions that I might be able to answer? If not, I'll make something up and we'll be here on the other end.
I think just, you know, standard stuff that we basically do every year, you know, noise ordinance, you know, activities where closing off streets. You know, we now have mobile food units. They're requesting that we waive, you know, the permit fee for that day for Saturday for the downtown area for mobile food units. Street dance, beer garden, you know, all of that kind of stuff, basically is a waiver of, you know, what our normal rules are for the other three hundred and sixty-four days out of the year, so. So everybody's aware of all of that?
No questions? Wow, thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Yeah, if we could.
That's great.
I'll move that we approve the agenda of items for the railroad days as presented.
Motion by Mary, second by John, to approve the Railroad Days outline and needs from the city as outlined in this proposal. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
And Jordan, I want to thank you and Renee. You guys are extremely organized, and I think the event is going to go off very good. Makes it a lot easier for us to have everything all together at one time and thought out well, so thank you.
Move on to item number five. Consider agreement with Minnesota Department of Revenue for collection of local sales and use tax.
So last December, we did, you know, pass the ordinance after the referendum passed and certified all of that with the state. This is just the agreement, basically spelling out what their role is, what our role is in collection of the sales tax. So I would recommend approval of that, since they've already started collecting it.
Do you know what the fees go for? One point what percent?
Basically, they collect it all, calculate it, turn around, and pay it back to us. So it's basically administrative fees.
Administrative fee?
No. So they, you know, there was some money on the front end to get everything set up, send out notifications to all of the sales tax paying entities in the area. And so us trying to do that locally and collect the sales tax would be a nightmare, so well worth it.
Do we know how we're doing with that? I suppose, do we know how we're doing with that so far? We started in April, right? Or did we start in May?
Collected in May, the first payment in April basically went to, or first payment that we got in May went largely to the set startup cost. But it was about fifteen thousand dollars for that month, so it's actually a little bit higher than we had anticipated back when we requested the legislature to approve it. Whether that's going to be consistent twelve months out of the year or not, who knows?
All right, I think we need entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Minnesota Department of Revenue for collection of local sales and use tax.
Motion by John, second by Mary. Joe, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carry. We will move on to item number six. This is always a tricky one. Consider not waiving the monetary limits on statutory tort liability for insurance coverage.
Every year.
And we do that every year, correct?
You do not waive it.
We do not.
Not waive it, but I mean, that's the motion every year.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Roy, second by Mary, to not waive the statutory tort limits, correct? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, got the right answer? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion and questions about that? All right, it is explained pretty well, I think, in the waiver form that the LNC sent to us, but it is confusing. Anyways, we have a motion and a second, and no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nice one. All right, we'll go on to item number seven. Consider approval of Sacred Heart Catholic Church gambling permit for October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
So Kathy, the permit's in your packet, I believe. This is the fall event that the church does every year, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve Sacred Heart gambling permit for the twenty-ninth of October.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Blake. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carry. All right, we'll move on to committee reports. The first round is Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Lacey gave me her minutes because she's gone tonight, so I'm on the Parks and Rec advisory board as well, so I won't read the whole thing, but I'll skim over the main parts. Session three just started and will end on July twenty-first. First, this was for our meeting for July eleventh. Lacey told us that she had two hundred and forty-four kids this summer for swimming lessons, so there's a lot of kids swimming this summer. Let's see what we got here. West Central Telephone Company emailed us about Wi-Fi at Dower for the seasonal sites. It would only be about four hundred dollars less if the city did it, and we chose to pay that extra four hundred dollars and let them do it, just because we're a little short-staffed with our city workers, and we could burn through that four hundred dollars pretty quick. So they're going to have Wi-Fi out at the campgrounds, and we are discussing at our next meeting whether or not we should increase the rates out there because of that. There are some people that don't use Wi-Fi out there, so we got to find that balance of, you know, even if you don't use it, you might have to pay for it. Let's see, Lacey informed us that Lincoln Park barn quilt was installed Friday, May, July seventh, and the quilt for the Northern Pacific Park was unveiled at the music in the park, Sunday, July ninth, and we had a great turnout for that. We're back to the tree grates in the downtown area. You know, one thing that we talked about at council was that there was a plan to possibly cement the grates. Are we going to do flowers, public art? Gerald had talked to Lisa Keier to see if there were places that put barn quilts on the sidewalks themselves. So we got a lot of ideas floating around out there, and we kind of need to talk to the business owners and the people that live around that area to get their takes on it too, because everybody's got their own opinion. Gerald and I went around town and took some soil samples with Noah at CLC and gave us back our information, which I still can't figure out what he's talking about.
But we're on the right track.
We're on the right track. There was a very elaborate sketch with the last person that Gerald reached out to at Minnesota State.
So that was soil testing lab.
And it was way over my head, so I need to actually sit down in a quiet room and go look at it when kids aren't screaming in my ear. Because it is, it's very, very thought out, so. And we also talked about the downtown rehabilitation group, talked about doing a small dog park off Highway ten for travelers. It would be near the trailhead, which is north of Staples Auto and west of the county building, and it's just a small fenced-in area, and I'm sure there's a, that'll evolve as time goes on too. We adjourned our meeting at five forty-nine. That's it for Lacey's minutes.
I have a question about, not a question so much, but about that Wi-Fi out there. That's going to be used by the seasonal, but anybody out there camping will have it, right?
I believe it's anybody camping.
It's not just for the seasonal campers, it's for anybody out there, right?
I think the initial intent, based on where the antennas, if that's the right word, router, would be placed would be largely seasonal.
Oh, what? Okay.
At the meeting, I thought that's right.
Yeah. And I think the intent would be that it's password protected. To turn it around and do a whole mesh system throughout the whole campground is a lot more expensive.
So the grades that you're talking about are the seasonal.
Seasonal, yeah.
Okay, not the, okay, that's what I was trying to, that makes sense. And then the other thing I was just going to mention was the dog park. I talked to Gerald just a little before meeting and talked about how that space was designated for a trailhead at some point. We haven't really done any of it, but the idea of this dog park is it's going to be fairly small and will take up that entire area.
Right. Yep. That's my understanding. It's coming from the downtown rehabilitation group. Maybe it could tie into, you know, there's a trail, trail potentially, Safe House to School is still out there somewhere, possibly?
We'll have to apply again, get funded again for it, but the other concept that we've talked a little bit now about with the Ives development in the mobile home park up there is about possibly going north of Black and then shooting across to eliminate that, you know, big drop-off coming off of Third Avenue there to tie the trail.
It definitely makes, definitely makes sense. I mean, have a dog park with dog walkers and then have a trail right there.
Yeah, and I think it could all tie in with Essentia there and then around or something, you know, just give people the opportunity to access that trail easier. And one other thing I forgot about too is Todd Wad reached out to Gerald and asked if they could put a camera across the lake at Dower facing the dock. Apparently, they're going to do a couple spots around the county.
Yep, that's a partnership of West Central Telephone and Todd Wadini Electric.
And it would just livestream the dock so people could tune it in. There it is, actually, right there. That's live footage right there.
Where's that camera?
Trees are turning up there.
Is it on the road?
Yeah, yeah.
It's actually, it's October, right?
You definitely don't know who's fishing out there.
Yeah, so I think where they're talking about doing it would be on that photo, about midway up on the left-hand side, so just beyond the pier entrance into the park. So it'd be, you know, aimed at the pier, so. Close enough, you can see the pier. Far enough away, you can't see who's on it.
Okay, anybody else have anything else? Thanks, Sean, for being on the part. All right, we'll move on to the Airport Advisory Board.
So we had a meeting on July seventeenth, and largely the purpose of the meeting was to do preliminary design and answer a bunch of questions for the engineers for the six-unit T-hanger expansion project for next year. And so Sarah Mattis from SEHR Engineer was there, Sean McMahon was there remotely, and went through a lot of information, door width, door opening height, overhang, slope, where do you want the outlets, all that kind of stuff. And October-ish, they anticipate a sixty percent design stage meeting, and then probably in December it'd be a ninety percent to get ready to go out for bids early next spring, so. It'd be a good project.
Sounds good. Any questions for Gerald on any of that? Now we'll move on to the next item, and that is open forum. Do we have anybody here today that would like to speak for the open forum portion of the meeting? All right, you guys flip a coin, or?
I just came to see.
Hey, Mark, why have you come up to the poll?
I don't like, I don't like the polls. I just came to see a community resident on the last thirty-seven years. Did the first fourteen years or so on Fifth Street up here, worked in town every day, and my wife and I decided to move out to the lake for a while. And then we came back to town and now we're living on Fifth Street, Sixth Street, whatever. And I came to see a couple different things, and I'm sure Glad Scott's here because I want to talk to the council about possibly having the alley behind Tower Pizza, Tower Pizza there, if you possibly get that, what do you call it? The machine run through there and sand is there for all winter. I've been trying to keep my lot clean for three or four months, and all that sand keeps working, blowing up, and we can't see anyone come through there and do that. There's also a couple of nice big puddles in that alley. I'm sure they'd be a nice improvement to the city, especially the variable days coming up. It would be a lot better to get that sandered, and it doesn't hot hold the field possibly. Second thing is, I was just wondering and inquiring about all those trash containers that the user have, are those going to be put out anymore? And if not, why not? Because it would certainly be nice to have very variable days when all the people are walking around town housing that trash at various spots. That was the second thing. The third thing is, I came to see, I read the paper the last couple of articles, or weeks, about various distributions to Mr. Scott Seduski, and I'm just wondering why those were so high, if they are so high. Obviously, he's getting paid that much. I understand the city gets a portion of those permit fees. Just want to know what portion is the city getting and what part of those fees go into? And maybe somebody could possibly tell me, how much money is the city made? Scott's making a hundred and thirty, forty thousand dollars in the last six months. How much is the city made out of that?
Gerald, are you going to address that in your?
Yes, I am.
Gerald's going to address that.
If you want to stick around, I'm going to talk about that.
All right.
Thank you, Mark.
But Scott, you think that's possible? Could possibly get that alley and possibly, I don't know, maybe have the streets re-figured out there for the time, so we don't have sand on there? So I don't have to get power cords in my bathtub that I just cleaned up behind the house? Yeah, I'll take you. All right, thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark.
Are those mattresses going in?
Oh, yeah, that's the other thing I was going to talk to. There's, like I said, it's been here thirty-seven years, and I was trying to keep our properties looking nice and modern and up to date. But for the last two or three months, there's been a number of mattresses that have been deposited behind the old Snap Fitness building, and they've been there. And we've been trying to get the city or somebody from the city to pick them up. If the city doesn't want to pick them up, I can go out and take my truck and haul them away, but that could be reversed for that. There's three old mattresses sitting behind Snap Fitness. They've been there for two, three months. And I don't know who the bodies have been there. I don't know if people just like to walk or drive down the alley and drop off their old mattresses or what. It should be nice to get any of the rare days coming up with those mattresses, if you're gone. Appreciate your consideration.
I'm here for taxes. And I realize speaking of Staples, we're what we're paying our building inspector. I've lived in three cities from Minneapolis, and this city is absolutely terrible for taxes. You wonder why nobody wants to move here. Well, the taxes are terrible within the city, and then I see you're paying a building inspector the kind of money you're paying him. Nobody that I know of that's a building inspector makes that kind of money. That is ridiculous. Now, to me, this council here is supposed to be responsible for the citizens of the city, and it don't look like anybody here gives a shit. Because the taxes are terrible and nobody's doing anything. You're paying a building inspector way above what he reduces, does. It's absolutely terrible, and what are we going to do about it?
We'll address that in the administrative report that's coming up right after this, if you want to listen to that for us.
You're damn right I do, because this is terrible. Somebody's got to do something.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else from any other open forum? If not, we'll move on to state administration report.
Okay, well, I'll jump right to the building official stuff. I think there's some confusion, number one, generated from the article in the newspaper. The administrative penalty thing that the council dealt with at the last meeting is specifically related to building maintenance code and rental code, not building code. So it's totally a separate issue from enforcement of the state building code. So Seduski Renovations gets paid by the permit. Lakewood, a homeowner, whoever it is that puts in and actually pulls a building permit, which is different than a zoning permit. You know, if you want to put a little shed in your backyard or put up a fence, that's a zoning permit. But that all gets paid to the city. Our arrangement with Seduski Renovations is it's eighty-twenty. They keep eighty percent of the plan review fee, eighty percent of the permit fee. And that fee is calculated based off, I believe it's a nineteen ninety-seven fee schedule that the council capped at eighty-five percent. So it's fifteen percent below what the ninety-seven fee schedule was going to be. And then the plan review fee is fifty percent, when normally it's sixty-five percent. So our permit, our building permit fees are quite low compared to other communities because of.
How many gets it down?
I'll get to that.
How much wages does it get?
He doesn't get wages. Seduski Renovations is a.
He has no dollars or hours.
He's an independent contractor, so we pay him no different than we pay Bolton and Mink for doing engineering services for a project. Or our city attorney. City attorney is not a city employee. So there's an agreement upfront that lays out that was done back in twenty fifteen, has not changed. The forty-five dollar per hour piece of that is if he does the rental housing inspections, that's forty-five dollars an hour, you know, for his employee. That's forty-five dollars an hour if he goes into a junk house on the south side to do an inspection before we condemn it or go hazardous building on it. So if he comes to a meeting, you know, if we had him come to the next council meeting, it'd be forty-five dollars an hour to come to that meeting. But he's an independent contractor, so out of the money that he gets, he has to cover all of his business expenses. I think everybody. Everybody.
I know it, we all do.
Exactly, yeah. So, you know, if he's got to pay his employee expenses, he has to pay for vehicles, pay for mileage, you know, all of that kind of stuff.
How many employees does he have?
Two that I'm aware of.
And Staples needs him.
He's not here a hundred percent of the time, but Scott's.
Collecting the money from here.
Based entirely on what the permit fees are.
And I think you better look at a different service rather than Seduski, because there's a lot cheaper services around than that.
I don't necessarily think cheaper services is what we're looking for. Scott has a state delegation agreement, so he can inspect hospital, school, all of those different projects. And the fee schedule is the fee schedule. So if nothing, you know, twenty twenty-one, it was forty thousand dollars. That's based entirely on the amount of development and the number of permits that are pulled during the year. So it's not, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year.
With over a hundred.
It fluctuates based on the development that's going on, so.
Seventy-five in this one report. Is that beyond a hundred and thirty-three from last week?
No.
So is he over two hundred now?
No. No. So you have projects like the Lakewood Health System Plaza. So you, you have, you have projects like, uh, the Lakewood Health System Plaza, uh, Cardinal Pines, uh, the Essentia project that'll be coming, the railroad project. We don't have those every year.
So the debt payer gets to fund the building, and he gets the money for it?
No, it's not tax dollars.
Bullshit, when you, when you don't tax them on their building, that's coming out of taxes somewhere.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused with...
Well, you fund, it's like the big apartments down there, they pay no taxes for years.
Taxing.
That's tax dollars. I'm sure he got a big chunk of that.
No.
Oh, he didn't inspect it?
He, he inspected it, but it's a permit fee that they pay, not a tax revenue, you know, it's not tax money that comes in that we're paying him for.
Permit fees was to cover his costs, plus the city is twenty percent back, that's why I was asking, how much is the city got?
Maybe the city does get a hundred and forty thousand. I mean, I mean, the city needs to get some money so they can reduce the damn taxes in this city.
Since they got, you got twenty percent, right?
Twenty percent.
So how much money have you guys collected? He's got a hundred and forty thousand or whatever this year, so how much money does the city collect?
I don't have that number right in front of me, but, you know, eighty, if eighty percent of it is a hundred and thirteen thousand or whatever, so. So, and that covers our cost for getting the permits in, processing the permits, getting to Scott, issuing the building permits, you know, all, all of those types of things. So it's, you know, it, it's a, uh, service that we contract for that, that is based entirely on the amount of development that's going on. If, if we don't have projects going on in town, we don't pay anything.
Well, how does Wadena build it or what?
Uh, they don't have the state building code.
They don't?
No.
Wadena don't have a state building code?
No, they don't.
They seem to be doing fine over there.
There's...
Doing, uh...
Well, and so are we.
A lot more than we are.
No, I, we can talk about that, but I would tend to disagree with you, but I don't want to get into an argument at a council meeting.
Well, I, I...
Come and, come and visit with me.
You guys have a little bit of business in Wadena, hell, well, we're here.
All right.
So, uh, you know, a couple of the other things that I wanted to, I talked about the state delegation agreement, and, you know, and that's a big deal. The state doesn't hand those out, uh, left and right, but one of the benefits that we get locally from the state delegation agreement is response time. So whether it's Lakewood, whether it's Essentia, the school, or a homeowner, when, when they need an inspection done, um, the state inspectors can be a week out before they show up to the site to do the inspection. So take the school project, uh, that's going on up there, they don't have a week to wait. They need to get the building done and opened up for school coming in the fall. Scott's here the next day. Uh, so that, that's an advantage, and that brings in additional revenue to the city, because otherwise those fees would all go to Department of Labor, Labor down in this, in St. Paul and stay there. So, and if you're interested, I will be happy to have Scott come and talk about what services that he provides, uh, for the city, but, um, in my experience, he does a great job out there, and, um, I don't, I, I have no issues with Scott Seduski, so.
I don't know that it's Scott that you guys are aiming at, it's...
It's, I, I don't know if you're wuthering, it's, it's the cost that you're spending for the service that you're getting, when it's, when people can get it a lot cheaper.
So...
That's the responsibility of this group here, to, to at least look at it and see if there's something better at, at a cheaper price. I don't care if it's fifty percent, sixty percent, uh, bring more money to the city and less to the inspector. I mean, that's, this, you guys' responsibility. I, I, I know other cities don't pay what we're paying. I've checked that out.
And, and I would say that other cities don't have the development that we've had in the last year.
Yeah, after we gave the lot down there to the hospital instead of selling it to Essentia, we gave them thirty thousand dollars. We gave them thirty thousand dollars. Essentia bid thirty thousand more for that article down there, and you guys decided to give it to Lakewood. And now Lakewood does a lot for this community, I'm not saying they don't, but what's fair is fair.
And, and I think the council at the time determined that it wasn't solely cost or, or the offer.
Evidently, because, because you give it to them, and then we turn around and give Scott Seduski a, a ton of friggin' money for his inspection dollars.
Well, Scott would have gotten that money whether Essentia built there or Lakewood, so.
Absolutely, but you'd have got thirty thousand dollars more, and you could have maybe taken off some taxes, or...
But we're talking, we're talking about our building inspector, we're not talking about development within the city, so I...
Yeah, I don't care about the, who's paying it?
I know.
Talking about the position.
I just want you to stay on topic with the, with the building inspector and not get into sales of properties.
I'm just saying, there's a lot of things going on here.
Yeah.
That you guys got to look at, because there was thirty thousand lost, we're losing tons of money with a, with a building inspector paying a ridiculous amount of money.
I don't believe that we're losing money by, by what you guys are seeing. I think we could make, potentially, obviously, if the percentage was different, we may be able to capture more, but we aren't losing money. We don't, that money that he gets is not, we're not, the city isn't...
It's not tax money.
It's not paying him that money out of, he's getting that because of the development in the city, and the amount of development, and the size of the development. The, the fees for those, those larger buildings are larger fees, so the percentages are larger, so the money is larger.
Yeah, the fees are a lot...
Well, and, and also the number of inspections that are required for those projects are substantially more than a small project.
So I...
And he doesn't get more money every time he comes. It's based on what the contract was, and I remember the dilemma the council was in with the previous inspector, and we had a lot of disagreements, and we had a lot of complaints from the, from the builders, from the, um, all of our contractors, and we don't have that, and...
Well, I, I, I disagree with you, because I've talked to a lot of builders, and they hate you, the building inspector, so.
Yeah, because they don't want...
They might not tell you that, but I've talked to four of them, and every one of them can't stand it.
If they don't tell us, and they tell you, that doesn't do, that doesn't do any good.
Well, I'm just telling them.
Yeah.
Well, they need to tell us if they're not happy.
They, they don't want to rock the boat, because, because they want their projects approved. You know, you piss somebody off, they can find something, I don't care what it is, they can find it, but they're not happy with them, but you're not going to hear it from them, because if they say something to you in, in an open forum like this, guess what? They, they'll, they'll find something wrong with their project.
Well, they had no...
That's their, that's their answer when I say that.
They had good problems complaining before, if, when they had all the problems that they had with them.
It is a dilemma, though, be it, be that as it may, it's still a dilemma, because we don't get that feedback, we don't, we don't know that that's going on, so it, it is a problem if that's truly happening.
So Gerald, is, is there a state guy that also comes to those, like, the Lakewood stuff that does it, not just Scott inspects?
No, that's with the delegation agreement. Scott does all of the inspections, that Department of Labor.
So they don't have to send somebody?
Exactly, yep. And so that, you know, those fees, instead of going to St. Paul, stay here.
And we get twenty percent.
And I, I just, I don't know any of this, because this was all done before us. Well, Blake, John, and I saw, so. You know, you gotta, you gotta call you, and nobody wants to do that, or you gotta...
Oh, I, in my experience, people don't have a problem calling me and complaining.
I got seven houses, I just don't do a lot, and nobody can call me.
So, but if, if the council wishes it, I'll be happy to, uh, find out if Scott would like to come and, um, you know, talk in more detail, but, you know, about what he does, so.
The, the only issue that I have is, is the fees themselves for, to, to do something to your house and having to, and has no structural problems or nothing to do with the structure and have to get a permit to do it. I have a little struggle with that. To change a toilet, I don't think we should have to have a permit.
And why?
And, um...
Why, why are we, why are we saying shame on you for making your house look better? Here, you gotta pay this permit.
Just to side their house, to roof their house, um, that's not a structural change. Now, if they were going to add on, yes. If they were going to move a wall, yes, but to change a door...
I think that's something that the council...
That, I, 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 that's my issue, and that's separate from what he's talking about.
Well, Scott, because he has money for doing that.
Good, just, that's totally separate, but, but that's my, so that's my issue.
And, and those fees, um, you know, the fee for siding, for windows, you know, for that type of thing, for residential, are, it's a nominal flat rate. I'm sure Scott would be happy to give those up, because he loses money, you know, if he sends somebody over here to inspect that, he's losing money doing it. But it's part of the, you know, of sealing up a house and making it weather tight and preventing homeowners from getting burned by fly-by-night, you know, installers.
Who, who sets, uh, what, what, you need, you need a story?
That's state, state building code.
Uh, no, no, I'm not, I, other cities don't have a, a permit to paint your house or change it or whatever.
We don't need a permit, that's the only thing you don't need a permit for.
You don't water either.
You don't water either. I mean, you don't, you don't have, other cities don't have those permits, and you gotta get them here.
So maybe the idea would be to have Scott come, and we have a discussion about that topic, um, at a meeting.
Well, theoretically, the higher his fees, the better it is for your city, because the higher the fees he charges, the more the city pays, right? And then in a hospital, the new endeavors out here, they don't give shit, they don't pay taxes.
He, he gets a percentage of the fee that, that is charged on...
The permit fee for building construction.
Right, right.
And Mark?
So, the hospital, the new hospital out here is charging six million, billing six million dollars for his fees, it's going to be higher, and obviously if his fee is higher, the city makes more money, because they get a part of it.
It's, it's not his fee.
I said twenty percent, you get twenty percent.
I know, but it's, I don't think it's his, he's not setting the fee.
No.
He's not setting the fee.
Who sets the fees?
It's off of the fee schedule that was adopted by the council back in two thousand...
So you didn't have a schedule, you can put in a staple world that tells you all the stuff you need, building permits and what the fees are?
Claw? Probably.
I think you should put that in the staple world. People would like to know what they're paying for. A lot of people don't know, I had no idea until I read the article last week, and it absolutely upset me, that we're paying somebody that kind of money to inspect.
And Mark, Lakewood is a non-taxable, but we do pay taxes.
For what?
For the property.
Real estate taxes.
Yes, they do.
For what? The clinic pays it?
Yes.
Or the hospital?
Well, the, well, Lakewood Health System does, that's one entity, but we're not required to, and they pay taxes on buildings and stuff that they aren't required to, because they care about the community.
Well, they're not, they're not forced to pay it.
No, but they do, so when you make a comment that they don't pay any taxes, they do.
Well, they're a nonprofit organization, typically nonprofit organizations do not pay any real estate taxes.
I know, but they do.
Well, God bless them.
That's right, yeah, but it's, it's that misinformation that is hard to hear to.
Well, maybe they should put that in the paper, I want to say, for real estate taxes, so people know. Then there won't be any miscommunication. You guys got to start communicating with the committed, community. People care.
All right, do you have anything else, Gerald?
Uh, just a couple of updates. Uh, I did hear from MinDOT, the Sixth Street rail crossing is going to be upgraded this year. They don't have a timeline or a schedule, but, um, it, it kind of went from pretty good to pretty bad very quickly, so, um, keep your fillings in your teeth, drive slow going across till they get that done. Um, Prairie View, uh, neighborhood project, had a meeting with Ives, uh, yesterday with a number of different, we had Merck and guys from our municipal electric there. There's a lot of stuff in there that needs to come out from the old park, um, and, uh, so they're, uh, working with Merck on, on the gas, uh, service lines that are in there, and trying to work with CenturyLink to pull out a lot of those old, um, outdated foam pads and all the rest of that, so. The three houses that they have on site, um, they've, uh, submitted, uh, permit applications for those, two out of the three of them are basically ready to go, uh, and I would anticipate as soon as they get their concrete contractor to show up, they'll be going on it, so. I think Phil Birga is ready to, uh, dig in water and sewer. That'll be nice to see that, that, uh, that last, uh, mobile home that's up there, the remnant one, um, Kropinski, I can't remember if it was this week or next week that he anticipates having that out of there, so that will be a victory for us, so. Uh, wanted to thank, um, fire department and, and police and others that, uh, participated in the, you know, along Highway Ten for the funeral procession on Saturday morning, so it starts to hit fairly close to home, and, uh, just want to let people know I appreciate them going out and, uh, paying tribute, uh, to him and his family, so. Uh, did a tour yesterday afternoon out at Stern Rubber. It's one of our, uh, longer manufacturing type facilities that we've had in town going back to, I believe, the early seventies, what did he say, fifty-five years though?
Eighteen sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, okay. Um, so it's, uh, fun to kind of check out the change and also some of the things that have been the same for a long time out there and that, so thanks, John, for arranging that for us. And, um, last one, just barn quilts, you know, we've talked quite a bit about barn quilts, and, uh, we've got, uh, got the ones up at, uh, Lincoln and NP, uh, we've got one up at the airport, and, uh, Lisa Keir just today delivered, uh, one for the city hall library here, so. Happy to help their efforts at getting their trail put together, so. That's all I have, unless there's any other questions.
Scott, the trees look good, they trimmed them up today, the sucker's on, looks good right now.
I'm moving that way, Gerald.
Forced by Roy, second by Mary to adjourn, all those in favor, six by saying aye. Aye. Aye, pose. Getting adjourned.